For eleven two thousand twenty-two, Stoughton School Committee meeting. This is being recorded on SMAC for future viewing. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we had looked at the public comment sign up and we do not have anybody signed up for public comment. You didn't see anybody?
I did not.
Ms. Pina Anokian?
Did not.
Okay. Let's have to know. Dr. Rabb. So the Student Advisory Committee representative, we did have a great meeting with them earlier today, but there was a...
Team dinner.
Team dinner, so she has left for that and she will be here at the next meeting, the chair, so we will see her then. And that was a great meeting. The next item on the agenda, you're up, Dr. Rabb's superintendent update.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Groppi, members of the committee. I have four things that I'd like to report this evening. The first is that tomorrow night is parent-teacher night at the middle school, so they're going to have a session from two thirty to three fifteen and then from six thirty to eight. I know communication's already gone out from the middle school principal, but it's a great opportunity for parents to get a progress report update on their students. Next Wednesday is the high schools' turn, and then for future planning, December fifth, all of the elementary schools will do their parent-teacher conferences on the same evening, like we've done in the past, all in person, and it's a great opportunity to meet your students, so I just wanted to put it out there. Second thing, Stoughton High School had a very successful homecoming dance on Saturday night. I was told that they haven't had a homecoming dance for eight years, so it was exciting for the school, four hundred and eighty-two students in attendance, and they all got to really enjoy themselves and have a good time. I stopped in for about an hour and was dancing with them and had a great time with the students.
Did you dance?
A little bit. They didn't really notice, but a little on the side.
You did dance? And there's no video anywhere out there?
No, no. I hope not, no. But I had a great time with the students. We had, we had a lot of fun. The third thing is, you may hear in the news that a new round of federal grants has come out for improving ventilation and air quality in schools. Stoughton is eligible for four hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars over the next four years. So there's nothing that we need to do tonight, but eventually we'll need to talk to Department of Education, talk to the school committee, and decide how we want to spend those funds. But we don't have to spend them until December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-six. So it's a four-year grant that we have plenty of time to figure out what we want to do, and again, another great opportunity to improve air quality for the schools.
Can we have Ms. Husany come to a school committee meeting at some point this year and talk about, we have the facilities master plan for the schools, and what her prioritization would be and what she would like to do for that?
Sure.
And I'm assuming she already knows what she'd like to do.
She's got it.
So it would be great to hear from her, what she's going to do with that grant and start to pursue that. Cool.
Absolutely. And the fourth thing is the ALPAC, our English Language Parent Advisory Council, they're going to be having their elections in December. So I just wanted to put it out there that they'll be electing a chair, an assistant chair, and a secretary at their meeting in December, and to put it out there for anybody interested who's in ALPAC, those elections will be open and well advertised.
Can we put out an email to all families in the district regarding that and that those positions are open and when the election will be, and put that in multiple languages so that any person that is in the district, we had a large amount of ELL families join the district, I believe at the high school, right, this year?
Mm-hmm.
So that way they know that it's coming up, maybe they'll, will have some interest from newcomers?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And that's all I have this evening.
Does anybody have any questions or any?
I'll see if I can find a video of that dancing.
Yes, I, I feel like there should be a video out there of you dancing.
A lot of phones on, you never know.
I know. We put it right up on the screen.
I think people might have been in shock because I think it would have made it out there. Was it the electric slides, like, what were you doing, the Macarena? Was there a specific dance?
No, just kind of walking back and forth. I don't know.
Oh, so it's the speed move?
Just, you know.
Speed walking? Oh, okay. That's funny. Well, that's nice. I heard the kids had a great time, and the Student Advisory Council, they had told us that they had a good time, too. Glad to hear that they brought it back. Okay, so under new business on the agenda, we have the Stoughton Youth Lacrosse Use of Facilities Fee waiver request. It is always a mouthful, reading that. So there's a letter here. We received this from different youth programs in town. The last meeting, I believe, we approved the STOIAC one, so this is kind of a routine one. Katie, do you want to, is there an excerpt from that you wanted to?
They were just, they were just basically telling how all those surrounding communities already have the turf fields and they're able to practice and use the turf field, so it would be, you know, an honor for them to be able to host and use the Veterans Memorial. So basically, they would, we would like to kindly request a waiver of the usage fees for the Veterans Memorial Stadium for the Stoughton Youth Lacrosse Program between March first and June thirtieth for our two thousand twenty-three season. They do understand that we would be responsible for associated cost of the custo- custo- cust-
Custodial.
Custodial.
Yes.
Services required. We submitted the Use of Facilities form to secure the facility for these dates, and they thank you very much for your time and consideration. Please let me know if you need any additional information or have any questions.
So just for folks to understand, currently, they have a nonusable field that they lease from the town. It's not usable. Students or children in the town could break an ankle, fall, there's like divots all through that, so they're trying to work on something to get the town meeting to, to keep that moving forward, to fix that. So what we, as a school district, said is you can use that turf field to host your games, and we, it's been a learning curve for us last year, you know, with practices and games, and I know that you've talked to different folks about different activities and outside the building and moving stuff. So the use of facilities that they submitted was for the turf field for games on Sundays, knowing that there's a time block-
That's right.
-that's slotted for someone to use on a Sunday outside of Stoughton Public Schools, but in the mornings, the varsity teams, that is reserved for varsity teams, so we will not approve any use of facilities for anybody outside of the Stoughton Public Schools because we want those varsity teams to be able to practice before a Monday game. So they submitted them and it was approved, and then for practices, they would have a grass field somewhere because we're unable to, because we have lacrosse team, two, four teams are going to be playing, JV and varsity for girls and boys now, they're going to be needing to use all of the, the field, so we talked about potentially them having the Hanson for practices. And, and that's just on an interim basis until they're able to get funding and the field ready, set up, Mark's Field for them in a couple of years.
Well, I'll make a motion to accept the request for the, from March first to June thirtieth for the two thousand twenty-three lacrosse season.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you.
I hope they can get that Mark's Field better for them.
I hope so. They need it. I know they're on the CPC, so, for funding. All right, so there's another item. Would you mind taking this?
Not at all. Britta Reisfelder of the Reisfelder Insurance Real Estate Agency reached out to Mrs. Miller, and they'd like to endow a scholarship for two seniors, each receiving twenty-five hundred dollars. Their requirements are a graduate from Stoughton High School, pursuing a degree in health sciences, business, political science, engineering, or construction management with a GPA of three point oh or higher. They're also going to ask eligible students to submit an essay of five hundred words or less on why they are proud to have grown up in Stoughton. Britta Reisfelder is a nineteen-eighties graduate of Stoughton High School, and they're very excited to endow the scholarship for the seniors.
I'll make a motion to accept the very generous Reisfelder Group Scholarship.
Second motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for that generous donation. The next item is a quarterly, quarterly financial report presentation. I'm going to ask Ms., oh, hello, Mr. Cow, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Fantastic, Mr. Cow. Our business manager is here with us. I'm going to hand it over to you.
Okay, so in your packet, you had a quarterly financial report update. You know, we're off to a great start, usual start, and the encumbrances that you see there are, we've, I've encumbered all the salaries for all the permanent employees, excluding anyone that's hourly or any special stipend salaries, coaches, et cetera, as of, through September thirtieth. And as of today, I have not requested for any transfers. The summary sheet for the operating register shows we've spent about eighty-eight percent so far. Still working on moving people around where they need to be, come out of, because we're still in the process of hiring people and such. Do you have any questions?
Quick question.
Sure.
Are these supposed to, just the math, add the year-to-date expended encumbered in balance, supposed to-
Yes.
-be equivalent to the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty twenty-three budget?
Yes.
Fifty-two? I didn't see that it added.
What, fifty-two one ninety-nine?
Yeah, I, I had it at forty-five one ninety-nine. I don't know if it's wrong.
I'm looking, my sheet says the total budget's fifty-two one ninety-nine.
I'm just going to do the calcs again.
I'm not sure what you're looking at, Fabian.
I think she's looking from top down FY twenty-three.
Yeah.
From the one point one, thirty-nine point eight, four point three, four point two, one fifty-six K-
Yeah.
-and two point four.
Yeah.
She's coming up with a different calculation.
Oh, I don't know why that would be.
I think the encumbered number maybe didn't add up correctly, because you have thirty-one million encumbered in instructional.
Yeah, I'm getting forty-five one ninety-nine.
Might be the formula in the totals column.
Be the formula. I can fix that.
Yep.
And then, thank you. So in the revolving accounts, the chart below shows the revolving accounts through September thirtieth, and it's just posted receipts through August. So you see Circuit Breaker, we anticipate getting a deposit sometime, but before the end of this month. And School Lunch, we did receive some in August, but it just has not been, it hadn't been posted at the time I ran this report.
What was the total turnback for last year?
Still working on that. I'm hoping to get it pretty close to zero.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, Bill and I are still, we're all still working together as closing and POs and looking at what needs to be done. I, I think he anticipates closing the first week in November.
Then you'll know what the total turnback is.
Yes.
Would, would it be possible for you to just email us and let us know what the total number was?
Sure, absolutely.
When you're done? Thank you so much. I know you worked really hard on that, too, to get that down.
Yeah.
All the POs paid and stuff, so.
I've lost books. Is that just literally lost books?
Yeah, I, I guess, that's, that's been, that's been sitting out there for a few years, there hasn't anything come in and nothing's gone out. That's just the balance that's showing on the books right now. Yeah, if someone loses a book, they have to pay for it.
So this is the revolving account, accounts chart, which is nice to see.
Mm-hmm.
Just looking at it. What comes out of the facility rental parking account?
That would pay for the overtime for the custodians, for anyone that would be, be using the facilities. They pay us and it goes in and comes right out. Anything that is, any expenses that would be related to parking, that wouldn't be in the, the LEA budget.
So the overtime for the custodians comes out of the parking fee?
It's, it's all in one. Facility rental slash parking is one revolving account, so if, if a particular group rents the facility, they're, they're responsible to pay for the custodians if they're not already there. So that will go in and come right out. It's, it's all lumped into one.
So we don't know with the parking fee, what, what, what that money goes towards?
I'd have to look at it.
But it all goes towards maintenance that's involved with parking.
Right.
Well, you know, we're looking at now, if we're heading towards the electronic charging stations, there's costs incurred with that and, and fees to collect with that, but it's all kind of, currently, things, I don't know how to put it, things like striping, you know, may come out of there depending on what the budget could be.
That's needed, by the way.
Oh, that's very-
And the numbers on the parking spots are highly needed. Yeah. So it pays for those things to, to, that makes sense. Thank you. Yeah. I always, you know what, people ask.
Yeah, sure.
I, and I, I really don't know. Now I do, but people ask, why do you charge? It's nice because you get a set spot and you don't have to, you know, try to find a spot every day. You have a set spot, but it's also towards the maintenance of the parking lots.
Right.
Is basically the end. Thank you.
These are revolving credit accounts, sorry, but is there an expected date for receipt of payment for these or?
What, what, what do you mean?
These revolving accounts, like, we're expecting the money to come in, right?
Right, we're expecting the money to come in. So Circuit Breaker typically comes in sometime in October, which we have not received yet, that's why you see that as zero.
Okay.
And then School Lunch, they're usually like a month or two behind, and they just have not been posted yet.
Mm-hmm.
The other ones are, as they come in, they get-
As they come in.
As they come in for the different fees, whether it's, you know, athletics or summer school, or, you won't see anything in summer school right now, but, you know, transportation, preschool.
Are we writing things off after a certain amount of time?
That would be a question for the auditors and the accountants.
What do you mean?
So in other words, when Bill closes out, when he works with the auditors, he, if something's been sitting here for a long time, it would be up, they, you know, we would decide whether we would close it out or not.
Yeah, we do.
Yes.
We decide.
That's a school committee decision.
This is a school committee decision. We decide.
So I would work with Bill and the auditors, is what I'm saying.
So Bill Rowe is the town accountant, just so you're aware, and then-
I'm sorry.
What, now it's totally, that, some of them aren't, haven't worked with them yet, so he does all the record-keeping and he works very closely with her. And these revolving accounts, what happens is he'll send an email and he'll say, these accounts have been open with these balances for three years, or something like that.
He just recently did that, actually, with the grants.
And then we got an email, I know, I think last year or something, and it was saying the, all these accounts are open, what do you want to do? And then it could be that, as an example, the Wilkins was having the roof of the windows done one year, and there was all this work being done, but there was still open POs, purchase orders, and things were being paid, so it had to stay open, so while it was still open for a year or two, there was still, like, stuff happening, and then we go back and say, now we're comfortable with closing that because everything's been done, and then there's money that might go back.
But there's a process in place, which is-
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Anything else?
No, this is great. Thank you for putting together the revolving accounts.
Sure.
Something that we haven't really had a steady view into.
That will be part of the quarterly reporting going forward.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Would you mind sending us an updated memo with the corrected formulas?
Absolutely.
Fabian? Okay. Thank you so much. This looks really good.
Thank you.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay, what's the next thing? Oh, the FY twenty-four draft budget and article review. I think that you have to come back, right?
In case there's any hard questions.
Look at, she's running away. She said, I'm done, I'm tapping out. Just in case, I guess, if there's any-
That's my little friend.
I know. Running from us. But Dr. Rabb, would you mind walking us through, and then if we have any specific questions in it, I guess we'll wait. Wait, wait.
Not at all.
I don't know if the cameras are on you as you walk to the table, but that's quite a book.
Let me set the stage.
Wow.
Thank you, Mrs. Groppi, members of the committee. I'm pleased to present our FY twenty-four draft budget, but I wanted to just take a quick moment and set the stage for how did we get to FY twenty-four. It's important to remember that every year, the state sets spending requirements for every town, and this year, for FY twenty-three, that's the year we're in right now, here in Stoughton, our school spending requirements went up by twelve percent, or five million dollars. We're required to spend more money on our students. And so in order to offset that increase, as the committee knows, we received additional Chapter seventy funding. We received an additional four point two million dollars in Chapter seventy money. So that certainly didn't make up the entire difference, but it got us on the way. But we're not at the end yet. We're still working on that and working to make sure that we're spending all the money that we received from Chapter seventy on our students. And those increases, as the committee is aware, was to help all of our students with a focus on more families qualifying as low income. It wasn't so much additional families, but more families qualifying for low income status. We do have more EL students moving in. We went from three hundred and eighty-six to four hundred and ninety-three EL students over the last two years, so over a hundred more EL students, K to twelve, and higher special education costs. So the FY twenty-four budget that you see in front of you includes this additional Chapter seventy funding in two different pieces of money. The first is continuing the two point nine million dollars from the special town meeting into the FY twenty-four budget, so we're incorporating that two point nine million dollars into the budget. And then, as you'll see, we're adding one million fifty-two thousand, or one point nine percent, to the budget, and what that is, is translating the special town meeting articles for one million dollars into the budget for one million dollars. So at the end of the day, the entire budget increase for FY twenty-four is funded by Chapter seventy, and there's no additional cost to the town. And I think that's one of my biggest messages as we look at the FY twenty-four budget, is that we're funding the increases completely from Chapter seventy-eight, and there's no increased cost to the town looking at FY twenty-four. So what I'd like to do first is take a look at the budget summary on the top page and walk us through some of the changes. There aren't a whole lot of changes going into FY twenty-four, but I'd like to go through them just in terms of the important ones. So the first piece is right on the bottom there for recommended staff. In our triennial plan in FY twenty-four, we're recommending an assistant EL director, a hundred and eighty-day Unit B position, and that was in the triennial plan for an assistant director, and that's incorporated into this FY twenty-four budget. The primary reasons are the additional over a hundred new EL students and all of the work that is required to maintain the records for those EL students, the individual plans that have to be created for those students. It, when you have a program that's grown to this size, an EL, assistant EL director is critical to maintain the programming and maintain all the work that they've been doing. If we go to the top there and we look at the account descriptions, the administration increase is simply contractual increases for all of the administration. The instruction increase is broken down primarily in steps and lanes. Every year, teachers increase by steps and lanes. We also reclassified a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars from maintenance to our tech budget, and that's just different, we didn't, bottom line didn't change, but we moved it from maintenance because it was instructional computer equipment that was in our maintenance budget, and we moved that to our tech budget, which is where it belongs, much to Joyce's chagrin, but we, we did.
No, I'm fine. Taking responsibility.
We moved it over. So she has that, and it's all set in here. We also included the assistant EL director in the instruction. For other school services, the primary driver there is special education transportation. We have increased costs for all of our special education providers across the board for all the students that we transport, both in-house and to added district placements, as well as an increase in our athletic department. We added money for coaches in athletics as well as officials, and to make sure that we were properly funding our athletic department. So that's where that other instructional services increase of three ninety-four comes from. Three hundred of that is the special education transportation. You can see operations and maintenance went down because we transferred the funding across to technology. Our fixed costs improvement of fourteen thousand, that's really just in two categories. It's our cyber liability insurance for about twelve thousand dollars. That's something we need. You've certainly heard in the news, different towns have gotten attacked by different cyber crimes. We need to be prepared for that and we need to be insured against that, and so are increased costs there. And then a nominal, a nominal increase of just shy of two thousand dollars for athletic insurance. Added district tuitions went down by a hundred and four thousand because we had an increase in Circuit Breaker. So our increase in- went down by 104,000 because we had an increase in circuit breaker. So our increase in circuit breaker to $1.4 million in circuit breaker money, which is up from 1.2 last year, and we were able to use that to offset any increase in tuition. So at the end of the day, the tuition line goes down a little bit because we have more circuit breaker money that we can use toward it. As a matter of fact, there's still, as Mrs. Suko mentioned earlier, they're still finalizing that number, and it may go up a little bit as they give us a transportation reimbursement. But it's a good news. We've been able to secure more circuit breaker money, which goes right toward added district tuitions. The second category is the contractual salary increases. And so we put for the STA, the steps and lanes, paraprofessionals, and custodians, all based on the current contracts that we just settled for custodian secretaries and then non-aligned contracts. So that's the budget in a nutshell. It's a total of 1.9% increase over this year after we add this STM money. And I think it's a very conservative budget. It's also one that will allow us to move forward without any additional cost to the town because we can use Chapter 70 funding.
Okay, so thank you for that. Walk through. On the other school services, just trying to find the page for that.
Page 10 and 11? Actually, page 11.
Because it was the 394?
Mm-hmm. So if you look on the middle of page 12, you'll see special education transportation.
Do you want to walk us through or?
Do you want to?
Sure. Okay, so you can.
Sometimes I think I speak loud enough. So it's, other services starts on page 11, as Dr. Ab alluded to. So then if you go to the second page, about middle down the page, you'll see that special education transportation is up by just over 300,000.
Got it.
And then, you know, the contracted transportation for regular day went up about 30,000 because we added two buses, if you remember, in the new contract. And then if you also look at in athletics, which is, I'm sorry, I'm going backwards now, but on page 11, you'll see an increase in the coaches per the unit day contract and for the salaries for the officials for all home games.
Do you mind if, so where is, oh, I see it now.
So if you look at the, almost the top of page 11.
Department 115.
It's gone down. The director's salary's gone down. The contracted services for the trainer has gone down. The salaries for the coaches has gone up for the unit day contract. And the salaries for the officials has gone up for the home games. And you'll see a slight increase in the off-site rentals as well.
Why is that such a significant drop in the contracted service athletic trainer?
Because it's being, it's being offset by, with the revolving account. Part of it's being offset by the revolving account.
The actuals in the budget last year were 44,000, and we have an offset of 30,000 from the athletic revolving account. So we still have 80,000 toward that. It's just 50 and 30 is for the 80,000 toward that. The 75 last year, we only spent 44.
Forty-four.
So the 30.
It was just overestimated significantly. Okay.
Are these negotiated salaries or are these based on levels and rates?
Which ones?
The coaches.
Yeah, the coaches are.
Any salaries in the contract? Yeah, they all are. Except the, I'm trying to think it through. Yeah, except the non, the, I think it's the, that's what I'm trying to figure out too. I think I'm going where you're going. I think it's the non-union ones. It's still contractual. It's a contract, but it's not in a union contract. Yeah.
You mean for the officials?
That's what I was trying to, her and I were on the same.
Officials, yep.
Looking at the number. No, that answered me. I don't know, Katie, anybody else? Thank you. I just asked, the special ed bus increase, because it's the 300, that number, I was just looking at to try to understand it. Why is it, how did it go up so significantly? Was it a bunch of different?
A bunch of different things. We started to use new vendors and the prices have increased significantly since COVID.
Gas.
So gas has gone up, their insurance has gone up, you know, they're, we, it's actually been a challenge to actually find transportation for these kids. So, but we're not, you know, the whole Commonwealth's in the same boat. So.
I think last year it may have been a little underfunded too.
Catherine, do you have anything, any questions?
No.
This cover letter is great. It's very helpful.
This is, oh, great. Thank you.
And you were able to answer the, I just had the question on that. Instruction, I know, that's normal. And this is the one FTE that's in the triennial plan that we approved.
Right.
So in the year after.
The instructional increase.
Yeah. And then the year after, you'll see whatever the FTEs are for year two in the triennial plan, you'll see that broken out here. So ultimate's 1.91%, which is what is the difference in the Chapter 70 money that we're going forward with the two articles for at this fall.
So no increase to the town?
No increase. Okay. Good.
It's wonderful.
Thank you for all your hard work, guys, and thank you to your barnheads, your leadership team, all, everyone that you work with, Joyce Husaney, who had to put together a bunch of stuff for this, and all the planning and all the principals, because you meet with the principals, right?
Yes.
Is the process still the same? You meet with them early on?
Yes. Beginning of September, we met with the principals and all the directors and all the administration.
Cool. Now we have the articles. Do you guys want to?
Sure. So thank you. I'll just, I'll set the stage. So the first article is to look for a playground replacement at the Hanson. Last year, our student representatives brought up the need for Hanson Playground replacement, and they talked to us about how that playground really was looking a bit tired. And so we're beginning the process now of going to the CPA to try and secure some funding for the Hanson Playground. We submitted a preliminary application at the end of September. The regular application is due on October 25th. So we wanted to just take a moment and just update the committee on some of the issues on the playground itself. And then just to know that that's what we're pursuing that project. So if I could be so bold as to ask Joyce to give us a quick rundown of one or two of the issues on the playground, just from the back of the memo here.
Sure. Good evening. The playground is 22-plus years old. I have no records on the procurement process or the funding mechanisms for playgrounds. They were not apparently done at town meeting. So I have to rely on a maintenance guy who lives next to the Gibbons Playground and started 22 years ago. So he placed it within a, or not Gibbons, but near the Hanson, and it started 22 years ago. So he's able to place it at about 22 years old. It, the average life of a playground is 15 to 20 years. This is a playground manufacturer that is a fine manufacturer, but by today's standards and the equipment that we've been purchasing more recently doesn't hold up. Essentially, the problem is, is that the decks and the side rails that support everything had been like a plasticized coated steel, and it is delaminating, and it is causing sharp edges. It doesn't, you know, plastic sounds soft. This isn't. So it's causing a ton of maintenance issues. It's one thing to replace broken, you know, chains or bolts or things, but once you get into the point where the basic structure starts to come apart, we've been trying to keep ahead of it by grinding things down, by taking certain ladders or features out of service, but it's to the point of.
Beyond the usable life.
Yes. So it is, it's also a playground that has five pine trees within the fence of the playground, which is never suggested, recommended. Pine tree roots rise to meet the surface. And so every time we add mulch, the roots go higher up, and they're a huge stripping hazard. And it is the bottom of a hill, if you haven't noticed, at the Hanson, and has some severe drainage issues. So those are all things that we would like to remedy. The thought with the playground is, if you want to, it is not a designed playground. We have not worked with a landscape architect. We typically work with a playground company that does layouts for school playgrounds. And the thought is to include as many inclusive structures, whether it's for accessibility or for things like sensory issues. It is very much, it is very much a trend. It is definitely the right thing to do. And that would also probably involve, it will involve surfacing that is more accessible. So whether it's a full rubber surface or partial, those are all things we still have yet to work with the vendor on determining. But he came up with the amount for me as a, as a high end. Okay. But to be able to address everything from structures to drainage and the tree removal, because it's a significant playground.
And, go ahead, sorry.
I'm sorry. No, I was just wondering, when you do, when you do, I'll go look and everything, with the handicap, would you be doing, like how we had the handicap swing at Gibbons, would we be doing some kind of different structure like that on, on the playgrounds for?
It would, it is definitely the goal to include that. And along the way.
You can't have the same one. You have to have some difference.
I think I have a better one. Same manufacturer, where we had the We Go Swing, which is due to be installed in March or April. There's a We Go Round, which is a merry-go-round type of thing that you steer with your hand.
That's what we saw.
Yep. It's very cool. That is, that's the other kind of flagship of their accessibility.
Okay. Because I just figured, you know, if you're walking down that to try to get a new playground, your minds will just get everything that we.
And options for the families of different playgrounds to go to.
Yes. And, and the use of that playground is phenomenal. You come by on weekends. It is not just the playground. It is the basketball. It is the gaga pit. It is the fields. It is people teaching their kids to ride bikes. It is kids, you know, people, families playing catch and kicking balls. It's really nice to see what school playgrounds are to our community.
So just to let you know, we met with the Student Advisory Council earlier today, and this project was kind of a pet one that came out of a meeting we had with them a year ago. And the CPC Chair, right, as well, and we had talked to him, and this is something that we were talking to them about, and we talked about it this evening, and they have, we want them to be very close to this project and have some input and go to the Hanson, talk to the kids.
That'd be excellent.
And have a tour. They did already have some recommendations in terms of the basketball court and stuff, so we're going to hold on. And then we're gonna, you guys will talk and look at estimate-wise, and then really having the youth involved in that, I think will be great. And Mark Semenyan, the Chair of that committee, we would want him to come so that he can walk the grounds with the students.
Absolutely.
They're very, the students were very passionate about it. We had a previous, previous student that went there, one that had extended day there, and then one that had been there a few times. They all had the exact same feedback, like multiple things, which were, so you'll be surprised to hear what they had to say. It'd be nice for you to meet them. Yeah. So just so you know, that's why with the dollar amount, let's hold.
Sure. Well, especially when you start talking about basketball courts and things outside.
They all were saying that was.
They were saying it was a huge danger, but you guys can have those. Yeah. Yeah. You guys can have those discussed. That's your favorite stuff, right, Joyce?
It is.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you very much. The second article that we'd like to put forward is for security alarm upgrades and interior door hardware. So we have been through two lockdown drills, one in June, and we just finished with the elementary schools. And during both lockdown drills, Mrs. Husaney, our Director of Maintenance and Operations, as well as Dr. McGee, our Director of Technology, attended all of those lockdown drills and gathered feedback from all of the teachers about what was going on and how we could most effectively make those lockdown drills work. And then we've also done our own evaluation in terms of how the security of our buildings might even be enhanced. And so one of the things that we'd like to do is create consistent hardware and keying to quickly secure the rooms in the event of lockdowns. At the high school, that works very well. Doors lock. You know, we're trying to mimic all of the wonderful things that are at the new high school and push them out to the other schools as well. And some simple things, add some fire protection seals to update the closers, provide accessibility. One of the things that I learned today was that a regular doorknob isn't necessarily ADA compliant. It's better if it pushes or it pulls down. And for our preschool students, it's a little bit safer if it's a push knob. So little things like that that we're trying to add to and make sure that we also can sense when exterior doors are open. So I think I probably took the whole thing.
No.
Joyce, I apologize.
That's fine.
I got on a roll, but you can add anything you want.
Well, and so we'll start with the door hardware. That actually came out of last June's lockdowns. What we did last year was create a survey. So at the end of a lockdown, every teacher has the ability to comment on what worked or didn't work, or comments that they had that they could find, you know, for improvement. And door hardware was number one. So over the summer, we commissioned an architectural study by a hardware security specialist to look at all of our seven schools that were not the high school and make recommendations. That report came in a week or two after school started, so it's just been a short time. Short report, but there's a lot of decisions that need to be made yet. So with Dr. Ab, we'll be meeting with the principals and kind of going through what the results are to pick the best way for us, because there are, there are choices within that. And they could be identical to what the high school has, very likely will be. And so there's a project in and of itself there that is, it could be substantial. It could be replacing the core, key core, in a handset that already exists, or it could be replacing the whole hardware handset. So we look forward to kind of taking the next step with that, this second round of lockdowns. We had, we had the summer to go with maintenance and clean up a lot of what shouldn't have been working the way it was and make it better. We still want to take it to the next level. So we think that, that is the number one, it was the number one complaint. It was also the number one line of defense to protect a classroom. So there's a number of other things with that. What we hadn't had, and what I hadn't had any prior needs for was updating of the intrusion alarms, although we knew they were on the old side. It's the little keypad, like if you have a, you know, Simply Safe or Home type of thing, it's a keypad that has then connects to all the different nodes or zones. So whether they're motion alarms or contacts for doors and windows, or there's all sorts of glass breakage alarms and things that could be added. One of the shortfalls of our current systems in our other buildings is they have a maximum capacity of the number of zones. So as we get more intelligent about what we want to do and the hardware gets more intelligent, that basic panel system needs to be upgraded to support that and to support at our bigger schools, like the middle school, the number of users that need to have codes. Just, you know, a real quick rundown that I did with Dr. Ab, it's kind of enlightening when you look at just people like IT techs and maintenance and custodians who need to be able to get in a building. And then you add the other groups of people on top of it. We are close to capacity, we are at capacity at the middle school in terms of the number of users that we have. So it's, it's not, I mean, that's, it's a, I'd like to have it better. Are there ways around it? Yes. But we would like to have consistency throughout the system. One thing I didn't mention to you today, because I had so many things going on, when he pulls me in for a quick two-minute talk, one of the other benefits of updating the intrusion alarm, and I brought along my little visual aid, we use a Vigilon cameras in door access, which is kind of an industry standard. They're owned by Motorola, makes the radios. The intrusion alarm panels, the newer versions of them, have the ability to integrate with our existing, our other existing services. So an example of that would be at the high school where there's a bazillion, technical word, cameras and a heck of a lot of doors that could be, or motions that could be set off by intrusion or mice, as sometimes the case, what case was once.
Big ones.
No, just a really well-placed one. But I go back to cameras after every call, and I could spend two or three hours trying to find out what happened, or, you know, was it the wind that rattled the door or was somebody out there rattling a door? Integration with the new alarm system, which hasn't been done at the high school, even though it's a newer system, we need to get a Vigilon, has been spending a lot of time on site with us, to integrate so that when that intrusion piece goes off, it actually captures that camera image and sends it to your device. So, you know, they use their Motorola devices.
Like a Ring.
Kind of like a Ring, yeah, yeah. But you know exactly which of the bazillion, you know, zones was breached, and then you have the picture. So there's, there's things that we would like to be able to move forward with, taking all this wonderful technology we're investing in. Wrap it up a little bit nicer.
Can I ask you a question for the building committee? I was just sending her a note for the building committee for the new high school. If that's needed there, can the building committee, because that's still.
And like I said, I'm working with the Vigilon. I actually had them, we had them, Ryan and I had them come in to do the cameras and to help us, you know, determine what we needed. They're coming in in the following month now to go through all of our card access and really to kind of work at tying everything together. So they're the ones who presented it with us, probably. Probably wasn't all that possible when that intrusion alarm was installed, but it is now.
So can I just ask you one question, because I received a couple emails last year regarding a door being propped open at one of the elementary schools? So is part of this work going to be going to the principal or surveying and asking all the doors in all the elementary schools, which ones don't have a scanner that maybe perhaps need one, so people aren't propping them open or holding it open for someone while they run to their car? Is this part of that?
We're actually working, I mean, I'm working on that as we go. I've got a list of, for this meeting coming up with the Vigilon, of the ones that are key right now. There's, there's, you know, there's the must haves and there's the, you know, that would be nice to have. I'm certainly knocking off the must haves, which are the ones at the South Playground where there's no way to get around in those doors other than to come around the entire building.
Yeah. And the Hanson?
The Hanson, I'll take a look. They have, they have okay coverage, but they certainly could.
Is she aware of the areas? Okay.
Yeah. Oh, yes, yes.
Okay.
I'm just mixing up all my schools.
No, that's okay. Well, there's not, there's quite a few of them. There's a lot of schools. No, I was just asking because I think if that's part of this article, that's great because there are a lot of doors that don't have anything, and maybe it's a time to look at the whole facility and see what needs one with the scan card.
I will tell you that those will probably get knocked off before this article is funded.
Cool.
That is, that is, again, one of the goals, is to hit kind of the low-hanging fruit and the things that need to be done. Plus with the door, interior door hardware, there's a lot of places that could go to be expanded upon as well. So I want to make sure we're spending.
Cool.
Focused money on what it was focused for, and, yeah.
I don't know, I was confused. Alarm nodes and stuff, I don't, I don't even know what that means. Nodes, I don't know what nodes means.
Zones.
Okay.
Like I said, every motion detector, every door contact, every one of those is a unique node or zone.
Cool. Any questions? Anything? Anybody? Thank you, Ms. Husany.
Thank you.
It's always a pleasure to have you. You, too. Thank you. Dr. Rab, do you want to close it up or anything? Is there anything you wanted to add?
No, just to thank everybody, we have our budget and our two articles, and we're moving forward.
Thank you. If anybody has any questions in relation to items within the FY '24 draft budget, you can email Dr. Rab directly, and he'll get back to you. Okay? Just wrote on myself.
Nice.
It's nice that I wrote on myself? That hurts.
Sorry.
A lot. Okay.
Do you want to get up?
No, please don't. Hit you with this. The next item is the superintendent goals approval. The previous school committee meeting, we reviewed the draft goals. Stop down by Fabienne first and see if Fabienne, do you have anything, any questions or anything on this? I don't know if you reached out to him directly via email. Catherine?
No questions.
Ms. Pina, no question?
No, I think you're good to go.
Well, no, I'm just kidding. Okay. So what we need to do is approve these goals. So does anybody want to make a motion to approve Dr. Rab's 2022, 23?
To approve Dr. Rab's 22 to 23. Both.
Second.
Oh, nice.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sometimes I get in on the fun.
I know. That was such a good one, too.
I know. Looked you in the eyes when I seconded that one. Mr. Ford did not find humor in that at all.
Nope, he doesn't.
He doesn't, at all.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of September 28, 2022.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You said aye, okay.
I like that.
Other matters? Does anybody have any other matters? I have one other matter. We received this letter regarding the POPS, Parents of Performing Arts Students, letter that they'll be performing at the Bridgewater Rainham Regional High School for the Stoughton Marching Knights, Marching Black Knights. She's smiling while she watches me read, isn't she?
No, I was just.
Oh, okay. I can see you. Yes, this is pretty cool.